So we just have to do what's legal and right.
Which one? I'd like to say a few things, but if you don't.
No, I want you to. I want you to absolutely. No, no, no. Yeah, absolutely. This is something that we appreciate your comments on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you can all bow your heads for just a moment and join me in prayer of the Lord's Prayer.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
Hey, good morning, everybody. Our next public workshop will be Tuesday, August 20th, 10:30 a.m. Our next regular meeting will be Wednesday, August 21st at 10:30 a.m., both in this room. Madam clerk.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco.
Here.
Boy.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated August 6, 2024, and the regular meeting dated August 7, 2024, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second it.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Because they skip, when people are talking over each other, people aren't announcing their names when they speak, and they're generally not compliant, no.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number three is to transfer monies.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number four is to approve additional appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number five is to approve transfer of appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number six is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special hauling permit to move overweight equipment requested by the company listed, Southern Pines Trucking, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number seven is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permits for fleet vehicles requested by the companies listed, Bristol Disposal, Inc., and Duke Sanitary Service.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eight is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the individuals and companies as listed, Cheryl Baker, Levi Iker, ASW Pipeline LLC, Daniel Frye, Enbridge Gas, Ohio.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number nine is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to sign a maintenance contract with AT&amp;T Corp. for Trumbull County's Vesta 911 equipment. This would be a one-year contract for maintenance services at the total annual cost of $50,065.94 for the term of August 20th, 2024, through August 19th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. I just wanna, I'm glad that there wasn't any difficulty with changing those to the President of the Board, and I want to make sure that all of the, that the Board realizes, which they should, and that every department head or anyone in the county knows that they may not sign any agreements or contract on, only the Board of Commissioners can sign that for it to be valid. So I just wanted to bring that up again.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 10 is to receive and place on file the monthly activities report for the Trumbull County Dog Kennel for the month of July, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes, and I also want to say, when these are being, this needs to be submitted by the dog kennel or whoever, and they have to send it in the proper process and include a copy of the report.
It was submitted.
That, it was, I didn't see it.
Well, you should have called Michelle Goss if you didn't, you asked for it three minutes before the meeting.
It's supposed to be uploaded normally, we, you weren't including them before, and then you were sending them separately, and there is nothing that's under the approved for this week that said that under the proper process that we're supposed to follow. You check approved, there is nothing in there that was approved for this, and I just want to make sure that everything that's coming in has a supporting information with it, because there were a few other items this week that didn't have that.
Please turn your favor off if you're not used.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Item number 11 is a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act funds, and this is for Eastgate Regional Council of Governments. And commissioners, on the next page, this is a one-time grant to the Eastgate Regional Council of Governments in the amount of $1,500,000 to be used for funding a broadband expansion project in northern Trumbull County consistent with the application and sample RFPs submitted by Eastgate to the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 12 is to enter into an agreement between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and the Eastgate Regional Council of Governments, as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel to provide funds for the Eastgate Cog to oversee a broadband infrastructure deployment, as described in Exhibit A, and the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners allocates the sum of $1,500,000 to the Eastgate Council, Regional Council of Governments.
Motion to approve.
I'll second discussion. I just want to say on this, this is one of the biggest checks we've written out of ARPA. It's the biggest one we've written since I've been here, but I think it's well needed. This is going to serve some people, the northern tier of Trumbull County, all those areas that have to rely on satellite internet, and a lot of people can't conduct business, they can't, myself included. I lived in Kinsman and moved closer to the city because of internet and because of the issues I was having doing my job with lack of internet up there. So this is something I'm proud to be able to appropriate these funds. I entrust Eastgate to move forward with this in cooperation with all of its partners, and I look forward to the day when everybody in Trumbull County is able to get good internet service.
Yeah, and I want to say, this is, this is the exact purpose that we should be using the ARPA funds for. It's infrastructure such as this, and it's also just not infrastructure, it's a response to COVID, because there was such a problem that we saw when people had to go to school from home and had to work remotely. It's fantastic that we had this windfall of funds in order to use for purposes exactly like this. This is the, in my eyes, the most perfect use of the funds, and I'm grateful for all the work that you've done to advance this in Trumbull County.
I'd also echo those sentiments, and listen, for everybody out there, this is the utility of the future. We need to be ahead of this, and we need to invest in it now, and like the commissioner said, we have this windfall of federal dollars that we're very, very proud to put back into the communities. That lake-to-river backbone is going to be so critical to so many people in our region, not just in Trumbull County, and then the RFP with the northern tier of the counties is also something that's going to be so important. I applaud Eastgate for, for starting this. This has come a long way from the first, from 2017, when we started our broadband feasibility study in the Planning Commission, Julie Green, Nick Coggins, and now it's grown to where we have other, other entities involved, other, other counties and municipalities. So th- this is big, and we want to get ahead of this, and we want to have the utility of the future for new businesses, for schools, for work from home, and be prepared in the future for whatever comes. So we appreciate it.
Yeah, that was our, that was our commitment as soon as I started. The one thing that we agreed right out the gates, we're going to make sure that this happens, and I'm really happy that to see it coming to fruition.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Yeah, can we present a check to you?
Yeah, I don't know where I'm going with this.
Item 13 is a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act funds. This is for the city of Hubbard, and at the bottom of that page, this is a one-time grant to the city of Hubbard in the amount of $300,000 for the purchase of two 400-kilowatt diesel generators, transfer switches, and diesel tanks.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item 14 goes along with that to enter into an agreement between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and the city of Hubbard, as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel, to provide funds toward the purchase and installation of 440-kilowatt diesel generators, associated transfer switches, and replacement of diesel tanks, and the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners allocates the sum of $300,000 to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
I don't see anybody from Hubbard here, but we'll make sure we get the check presented to them at a council meeting or.
She needs to sign this.
Okay. Perfect. And commissioner will sign it, and we'll get it delivered to Hubbard.
Item number 15 is a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act funds, and this is for Fowler Township.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item 16 is to enter into an agreement between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and Fowler Township, as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel, to provide funds for the replacement of a culvert, and the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners allocates the sum of $30,000 to the township.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Boy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes, and I, I really like seeing projects where stormwater is addressed. This is one of my pet peeves, and I'd love to see regional planning for stormwater management one day, because what they do in one community affects the other, but they're still separate, they're, they're done separately. So to Eastgate, all right, thank you.
Item number 17 is to award a contract to the lowest and best bidder, Proscape Septic and Landscape Contractors, to replace three home sewage treatment systems in the amount of $56,178, and this contract is, is to be paid from program years 23 and 24.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item 18 is to award a contract to the lowest and best bidder, 2M Services LLC, to replace four home sewage treatment systems in the amount of $62,795, and this contract is to be paid for from program year 23 and 24.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item 19 is to award a contract to the lowest and best bidder, S&amp;P Septic and Excavating, to replace three home sewage treatment systems, and paid for through project year 24, OEP A WPC LF, in the total amount of $48,100.
Motion to approve.
Second it.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item 20 is to approve change order number one with Carrilla Contractors, Inc. for the Yankee Lake Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, number 5-S-18, in the amount of $64,826.27, revising the total contract value to $2,564,786.27.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
I, I want to just discuss this. When I started, even as recently as like last year, sometimes we would get nine or 10 months of change orders for work that's already been done, and it's gotten so proper finally, and I'm really thankful that we're getting the prosecutor's opinion done, that the change orders are coming ahead of time, that we're getting an opportunity to sign off on things the right way, and I'm just glad to see that happening and hoping that it will, I think it's going to continue, but that's the right way, and I'm really happy that it's, that things are moving along now in a, in a better fashion.
We have very capable and qualified department heads that are able to do their job well.
All right, Commissioner Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, I just wanted to denote that, that second one, that 272373, that should be a negative on that one.
Okay. I'll make that correction. So.
Total amount is still correct, Gary. Okay.
So we should. amend it.
I'll go ahead and.
But we're voting on it as it.
We're voting in the change order for the total amount. The breakdown is different. It's written in here in the background information.
To modify it to reflect the negative number for the 2,723.73, just so that it's correct.
Okay, I'll second it.
They vote on the modification.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Yes. And now do we have a motion for the, the new motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
For Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 21 is to approve Trumbull County's capital improvement program for the 39th round of funding for the state capital improvement program, and the 37th round of funding for the local transportation improvement program, program year 2026, and to submit the program pre-applications to the District 6 Public Works Integrating Committee on or before August 29th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. When is this going to be decided? Because isn't this the project that you pulled and then resubmitted or?
Number two is.
Yeah.
Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, the pre-applications are due on August 29th. I'll submit train drive, the highway engineers will submit the other two projects on here. Then we go through the scoring process through Eastgate, and we'll probably get the final list of the, this, this slate of projects. I want to say it's in November.
What did they do with the money that you gave back?
It goes back into their pot, and it's available for this round.
So you're trying to double it?
Yes.
What, okay. Do they do that normally?
I've done it before. I did it, I sent back Jacobs Road, 750,000, and next year got 1.5 million for Meadowbrook. So it, this is something that's been done before.
And you have any communication? I've seen the emails you've had.
Yes.
Any communication with them in regards to telling them what you're doing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So for item 21, Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item 22 is to amend agenda item dated June 28th, 2024, item number 17, and that was to award the lowest responsive and responsible bid submitted by Shelley &amp; Sands, Inc. for the TRU Larchmont Avenue project in the amount of $1,5820.81, and to enter into a contract with Shelley &amp; Sands for said project. Amendment is necessary to update the project payment to reflect that 80% will remain paid by an STBG grant received through Eastgate Regional Council of Governments, which will be direct pay. The local share has changed to an OPWC grant of $187,500, which was recently received by the county engineer's department for this project and is direct pay, and the remaining balance of $15,664.16 will be paid from the engineer's highway fund as listed.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes, and there was an item number 23 that was added, that I asked to be added, and it's not here today.
Right, you earlier, you said you chastised department heads for not submitting their stuff correctly, and you said they need to follow policy. We have a policy for commissioners too that we adopted that said if a commissioner entered, puts something on the agenda after Thursday, it has to be approved by two commissioners. You didn't follow the policy, and Lisa did her job by not violating policy.
That policy.
It was in April. We just, we voted on it up here in April. When we adopted the new policy of the portal, we have to follow.
Then I'm going to ask right now that the, whoever, I don't know, does anyone have a copy of it, of what was added, because I'd still like to make a motion.
But you, it's your ad. If you want to add it, go ahead and add it.
Okay, we have an employee in there. I know if the clerk could ask someone to get a copy of what it was written, because you sent it to us, but I don't have that in front of me, and I'd like to read that and make a motion from the floor. So can I have that, please?
It was your motion, Commissioner.
Stan, but I'm at, but it was written out, and I would like to have that. It's, it exists back there. So whoever's back there, I would like them to, to bring that out here, please. And is that, is that forthcoming?
Yes.
Can you, can you ask that somewhere?
Ma'am, sure. This is your motion from the floor. Go ahead and make it. If you wrote it up, go get it.
For me to go get it? We have staff back there. Is, is, can, can I confirm, Lisa, that it is back there?
You sent an email that was not a motion. It was an email to Lisa that was not a motion. It was just, put this on here, include this, this, and this. You have your email. Pull your email up on your phone and read it if you want to do it that way. She doesn't have to do your work for you.
No, we have staff. I'm so tired of being treated this way. I'm, just because I am a woman doesn't mean that I'm not entitled.
He's a woman too.
And you're entitled to have staff? Where, I'm entitled to have staff as well, and there's support staff. There's five other ladies here working. There's, are you saying that none of them can give me a copy of that? You know what I'm asking for.
None of them work.
Who are the five other ladies working? Who are the five other ladies working? We have three ladies back there. Did we hire someone I don't know about? Lisa, you did your job. You're doing your job. There was a policy that we adopted up here, the three of us. And you, you were violating policy, yet you chastised department heads earlier. You said there's a bunch of items on the agenda submitted wrong. Yours was included.
You know that the young lady back there can get a, if they're back there making huge checks to present to people, they can print something off for a commissioner that's back that.
Where are they supposed to get it? If it was, if it's not on the agenda?
Has access to that, doesn't she?
Why don't you just read the motion?
I don't have it before me.
You don't have it in your email?
No, because the way it was submitted, there were blanks, and it was just a one-liner.
Right, and so you filled it in properly, and I would like to have that. If you could please ask someone back there to print it so that I could read it.
Commissioner Malloy, I feel that what I have to say will probably assist with this.
Okay, Martha, you have the floor.
The county owns property at 7088 McMullen Street in Brookfield, parcel number 03-001504, where the sanitary engineer has a water tower located, the Marx Tower is being built, and there is an additional radio, radio tower located. Mr. Joseph Ray owns property surrounding the county property. Mr. Ray or his LLC has owned that parcel surrounding the county property since 2012. His property is not landlocked. He has frontage on McMullen, west of the county.
I need to make a point of personal privilege, just, just for a moment. I'm sorry. I mean, that means wait, and I'll excuse myself, and I'll be back.
She just chastised the department heads for not submitting things incorrectly, and she submitted something incorrectly, and it's our fault.
And in violation of our policy.
Correct, and tried to get Lisa to violate policy by ordering her to put it on the agenda and write it for. And she's probably back there right now terrorizing the women that are back there. Deputy, can you go back there, please? Okay. Apologize, Martha, for the interruption.
May I continue now?
Go ahead.
His his property is not landlocked. He has frontage on McMullen west of the county property, both with the parcel surrounding the county property and another adjacent parcel he owns. Additionally, has he has frontage on Sharon Stewart Road, sorry, Stuart Sharon Road with another adjacent parcel. It has come to my attention that Mr. Ray and employees of Select Water Solutions LLC have been trespassing by utilizing the utility road to access his surrounding property. This creates a liability for the county, and then if Mr. Ray or one of his, one of the Select Water Solutions LLC employees is injured, the county could be sued. Additionally, since the Marx Tower is being constructed, there are materials which could be damaged or stolen. We've allocated eight hundred and seventy five thousand to our part of this project. The total cost of this project is over one point five million dollars. Neither Mr. Ray or nor Select Water Solution has an easement, nor has one been formally requested. Mr. Ray has said that there's a provision in his purchase agreement that allows him to purchase the access road for a dollar. An examination of the purchase agreement shows no such provision, nor has he produced produced evidence of this. As noted, Mr. Ray has owned the property in one form or another since two thousand, twelve, sufficient time to construct his roadway drive and was well aware of the lack roadway, lack of roadway or drive when he purchased the property. Due to the liability issues.
Commissioner, you're out of order. She's talking. She has the floor, not you.
Due to the liability issues, I asked the commissioners to give notice to both Mr. Ray and Select Water Solutions to cease trespassing. Also, I asked the commissioners to put up a security gate or fence to be accessed only by those with county business to complete. Thank you.
To do this. Okay, so I'm making a motion from the floor to have the to approve the Tremble County prosecutor on behalf of the Board of Commissioners to send a notice to Joseph Ray and Select Water Solutions to stop trespassing immediately on county property located at seven zero eight eight McMullen Street, parcel zero three dash zero, zero, one, five, zero, four in Brookfield Township.
I'll I'll second it in for discussion. You know, I think
the agenda.
I I think that when we talk about not only the investment that Tremble County has made, which is almost a million dollars in investment, and if you add the water tower, it's much more than that. But also it being near a school, we discussed this yesterday with the injection well being near a school and and with, you know, going back to two thousand, fifteen, my first year in office or my second year in office, actually, there was a there was a industrial spill in Bianna, and it had the entire community in an uproar. We had aquatic animals dying, turtles, muskrats, everything. There was seismic activity. I think that while I understand that this is a business and it's not regulated here locally, I think we need to be more concerned with the people that this affects when we talk about being good neighbors and and the potential that this has to affect a community. And we have Mr. Dan Suttles here from Brookfield Township who this would, this is right in his backyard. And, you know, when we look at, yes.
My question is, are you second this for purpose of a discussion?
Yes, that's what he said.
Actually agree with having a letter sent?
I'm discussing it. I what what did you think I was doing? I don't know.
I don't know, because sometimes you'll second things for discussion and still.
Please address the chair.
We haven't gotten to the vote yet, you know.
Okay.
But obviously, you know, o- over the course of years that I've been here, this has become a dumping ground for for a lot of this waste in Pennsylvania and West Virginia. And it it's got to tell you something. When you see these states that aren't accepting this, that are trucking it over here, you know, we can't regulate it, unfortunately, locally. Our hands are tied, but but the state can. And I've I've sent letters to them on different occasions to ODNR with my displeasure of this. And I think that at the end of the day, I I'm not begrudging anybody for doing business, but I'm not going to facilitate anything that's gonna that's gonna have this happen. Number one, even if they do use that access road, they're going to tear it up because there's going to be truck traffic all hours of the day. There are so many ramifications to this when we talk about the Marx Tower that we're investing and the state is investing in. I just think it's it's prudent for us to, you know, send this cease and desist letter and to make sure that we're protecting that community because it's our constituents at the end of the day.
Okay, I I got, I have the floor now. I have the floor now. You already spoke earlier.
I didn't speak earlier. I didn't have an opportunity.
I am speaking now. I did not grant you permission yet. You can do that when you're done. I'm the president of the board.
I'm the board commissioner.
You didn't allow other people to have discussions.
He is the president. I'm the president of the board commissioner. You will be called on when I'm done. Okay, I warn our board and I warn our county. This is a very slippery slope we're dealing with here. We we want, there's difference between facilitate and discriminate. We have a citizen who's.
Let me clear this up. You use the the word discriminate nonstop, and I don't think you have any concept of what it means.
Okay, we have easements.
Discriminating.
I have a floor.
No, because yesterday I was trying to talk on at the meeting and I didn't get an opportunity. It doesn't matter. I tried to have an opportunity to speak about and correct your language. Please don't use discriminate. Discriminate is for protected classes and protected groups. If you studied anything related to administration, you would realize that this is not the appropriate term to say discrimination.
Well, I disagree with you, and I have the floor. We have easements all over the county, and here's the thing. When we look at this, Mr. Ray has property that was bought all around our property. We own one little road, and he has property on all sides of us, more than seventy acres. He's been utilizing that road since two thousand, twelve. The injection well and the storage tanks that are there, although I think it's atrocious that we get waste from outside the state being dumped here in Ohio, that has nothing to do with this issue. We can't discriminate against a gentleman because of what business he's in and what or what that he's a landlord leasing to another business.
Just like a foot.
Well, say say what you want to say with it. Okay. And we decided to put a radio tower on property next to an injection well that had already been permitted by ODNR and EPA. And now we're saying you can't do this here. We don't like you, so we're not going to let you cut across our property anymore.
We just.
I think we have.
We.
Would you listen? I have the floor, Commissioner.
Talking shit, Denny.
Okay, I have the floor.
You seriously are pretending like that this is something that's been known, and we treat different people differently. That's absolutely.
Can we please let somebody finish?
The road for said for twelve years and never had an issue with us. He has buildings all through the property. He has equipment all through the property. He's on that property every single day conducting business, and he uses our road to get to his business that is on the property.
Did you talk to him?
I have talked to him. He called me first initially and said he had a problem with this as a constituent. I have talked to him. He he did state also, and why the reason I'd like to table this, we have today. I get a phone call this morning from Frank Fuda, who said, we have something on file. We did give him an easement that Paul Helsel wrote up. We journalized it. It's in the journal that gives him access to the property, gives him an easement when he bought the property more than twelve years ago. But I I asked the clerks, I asked the clerks to look for that. They're going to need time to dig in all the way back to the Paul Helsel days. But Frank Fuda said.
Provide that. He would need to provide that then.
Okay. And I want to give him time to do that. He says it's there. He also says Jason Earnhardt wrote the agreement up, that there's an agreement signed by Jason Earnhardt that states.
It's not going to write anything on behalf of a of a vendor. I'm sorry, but.
And the property changed hands, and they did an opinion with easement. This is what is being stated by him and his lawyers. So if we want to avoid a legal battle, if we want to avoid possible injunctions on the property and negative law or or negative lawsuit type things.
He's spending hundreds of thousands, tens of thousands of dollars defending open meetings things that are coming out of the general fund. This is something that is for the safety and well.
I agree, but we have to do things the right way. We can't just say we don't like this business. Let's screw it down.
Not liking the business. It's protecting the county and the liability associated with letting someone access our property now that we are aware of.
We let people park on our property.
Now that.
Everywhere.
We are.
You guys are property.
Now that we are aware of what's going on, we should not. Let me tell you this. I I happen to know the people who looked at the property to purchase it before that, and they didn't buy it because they didn't have access and there was no infrastructure. So how can we then say, oh, this one we're going to allow access to when the other one could have purchased it, and they didn't because there was no access?
There was a lawsuit back at the time.
No.
A settlement with that, that he states they have an agreement written by Jason Earnhardt ratified by Dan Dan Polivka, Frank Fuda, and Paul Hetsel. And we need to give time to see if it does exist or not.
Okay.
Before we go out there and we send a letter to this guy and tell him, you're the only one that can't come across our property, but why people go across our other properties?
No one.
Park down the building on Saturdays and Sundays. Let them do other things on our properties. But this one guy, because you don't like the business exam, you're saying, no, we can't do it.
I don't necessarily agree with Commissioner Cantal Mesa's politics, but I do agree with the fact that we cannot have that risk associated with having that property.
What risk? What risk are you worried about?
Liability.
Of what? That what's going to happen?
Would you like to explain?
Liability for what? He's going to drive across the roadway. There's liability. He's going to get hit by a bus? He wants to drive across the roadway. He is going to submit paperwork for an easement, which will let him get right to his property if we allow him to go an extra fifty yards beyond where the county road is.
An application for an easement.
Right now, you're basically saying.
Make a lot of money off that.
Drive around, make a road that's mile long to drive around on the road.
Because that's that's what the the individual who I spoke to about this said, if you do do an easement, I and that's what I wanted to ask the prosecutor's office. Do we have to do the easement at fair market? Because if this company has so much, are we allowed to like make enough to?
Phil Danson from the county prosecutor's office. I want to set some things straight, and I know you're just repeating what you've been told, but
Right.
there's some things here that are absolutely verifiably not true based on existing public record. I just kind of want to lay that out there. I was actually involved in this lawsuit in two thousand, eleven, so I remember some about it. Jason Earnhardt hadn't been in the office for some time because he and I did not overlap at the county at all, and I started here in two thousand, seven. So Jason Earnhardt had nothing to do with the sale of this property. That would have been probably Jeff Adler, who's now Judge in Gerard. That process of purchasing and sale of the property went through the prosecutor, through the prosecutor's office, through the revised code procedure for the sale of public property. It was, I believe it was done by an advertiser, not by auctioneer. The bottom line is that Buckeye Whitetails, Mr. Ray purchased the property.
That's a violation.
No, it's not. I'm talking right now, and I'm thinking, I hope that Maro is voting yes. We're in a public meeting.
The the state purchase contract was part of the bid package. They did not execute it for, I believe, around a year, at which point the county, the Board of Commissioners, tried to rescind the award because they weren't, they didn't appear to be interested in purchasing the property. Ultimately, they filed suit requiring specific performance of the contract. We went through that whole lawsuit. The end result was the property was sold to Buckeye Whitetails and Mr. Ray. The county retained fifty percent of the mineral interest because, as you recall, at that time, oil exploration was going pretty big around here. We retained fifty percent of the mineral interest, and also the sale never included that roadway. That was that was advertised that way. It never included that roadway section up to including the main radio tower that's been there for years and years that we leased to, I believe, I Heart Radio now. So if there is a an easement that exists on that, it's news to me. I've looked at that purchase agreement. I'm aware of the purchase agreement that was part of the lawsuit. I've heard rumors that that he has the right to purchase it for a dollar. I've never seen anything like that. I don't know where that comes from. If if he has evidence of it, I I'd be as glad as anybody to see it, but I've I've not, I've not seen it at this point. I'm not aware of it. I am not aware of any existing easement that he was given by the board back then. My only recollection of any of the property matters was the sale agreement through the lawsuit itself. Now, again, I'd be as glad as anybody to see any evidence that they have. I know he was represented by attorney Suhar back then. I I don't know who his attorney is now. I'd be glad to talk to any of them if they have any information.
That would be the purchase agreement, and I don't think the county would ever give a right for a dollar for an easement. It just doesn't even, it's not.
And I I would caution the board, and I I'm not going to stand up here and give any legal advice on this because I don't think it's appropriate to do in public at this point. But what I would say is I I think the board should understand. I've spent some time looking at it. There are only limited purposes for which the county can actually grant a formal easement to a private company. Utility companies are different. We have those all over. Nonprofit corporations, park districts, those are all different. We have easements we can grant to those entities. Private corporations are a lot more limited, so I'm not saying here on the spot that we wouldn't or couldn't explore an easement, but it would be subject to legal review to make sure it fit in with the revised code. The Board of Commissioners only has the power the statute gives it. And if the statute doesn't provide for giving an easement in this case, then we wouldn't be able to do it. There may be a possibility of a lease if that doesn't work. But again, all of that would need legal review to see if there is a section of the revised code that would authorize it. So I'm happy to work with the board on this. If the board has legal questions, they're welcome. You know, I I would encourage you to do it in writing so that there's attorney client privilege in case that there is a lawyer on the other side involved that's looking to make any claims about this. You know, I I don't know. I haven't heard from anybody. I know you guys maybe have. I'm here to help, but I think that just we need to understand the history of this, and we also, you know, we need to see documentation. If they believe they have some, let's let's take a look and let's see if there is something. But I'm not personally aware of it. I'll put it that way.
Yeah, thank you.
So I I agree, and he's stating that he does. Frank Fuda stating that there is something there. I'm asking to table this thing for a week.
It sounds like you're advocating for, like, you're in.
I'm advocating to not screw a citizen because we don't like his business. So we're saying you can't cross our property, but other properties, we'll let people cross them and and utilize them.
More communication with this guy than you are with our prosecutor's office to find out the facts, and that's concerning.
I I do want to just say one more thing in in terms of, you know, potential liability and things like that. That that could be an issue, given that this is not a public dedicated and accepted road. This is a a private access drive. But I also think that you guys also just, and I know Commissioner Cantal Mesa sort of touched on this. There is, there's a difference between enforcing the commissioner's property rights and and things like that for for, you know, liability concerns, things like that, and just the operation of an injection well generally. That's permitted by the state. That's.
It has nothing to do with us.
Something that that we regulate here. So I just want to make sure we're clear on that as well.
And also, there was, I was in, I, because I wanted to do my due diligence, and I know someone who's in that industry found out that there was another entity that looked at that property before and considered purchasing it, but they did not because they didn't have access. Does that make sense? So therein could be another concern.
Well, and and again, there is, there is technically, there's no existing roadway, but there is access. It's not a landlocked parcel. I'll put it that way. There is a border on McMullen Road. It's just to get to the other side. You almost have a horseshoe shape piece of property that would require a road all the way around.
That's what they'll have to do.
So there, those are things, again, I I'd be glad to discuss maybe more or or do do more research and and opinion in writing, but I I'd rather do that not publicly from this point on, I think.
Probably best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, again, I just caution the board that what if we can give one week to produce the paperwork, if we can, he can. If he can't, he can't. But in due diligence, as we would give to any other citizen out there, I think right now the gentleman's used the road for twelve years, never had a problem, has marched over our property, made many phone calls to the county when there was disruptions there, including having his bulldozer stolen from his property down that log or that access road. They did catch the people, and they were affiliated to a contractor that was going to build our Marx Tower, a friend or relative of one of the people giving the bid on the tower. And and again, we're putting a tower right next to his property, and now we don't like it once we found out that that was there. And I think we're targeting a gentleman. We're targeting a citizen. We never targeted him before until you saw what type of business he was going to lease to. Now, all of a sudden, we're targeting him.
We just found out.
How did you just find out? The guy's been up and down the road. Gary has had conversations with him for ten years. We put a gate up there with Gary. We both have locks on the gate. He does, and we do, with the sanitary engineer and and with the people from Marx.
Gary, did you, when did you, I'm sorry, but I've been left out of the loop with a lot, and evidently this might be something that I wasn't informed of. But as soon as I became apprised of it, I realized that it was.
Been there for four years.
Yeah, and sometimes things don't get communicated to me.
Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer. Yes, we've been working with Mr. Ray as far as access through the gate. Like I said, we had daisy chain locks down by the gate.
Did you tell the Board of Commissioners? Did you ever email? Did you tell the board of commissioners? Did you ever email me about it?
Well, ju- just for access to the property, uh, to prevent vandalism, that sort of thing. Yeah, yeah. But, but as far as this injection well goes, I haven't heard, this is the first I've, I've been hearing of it here just recently. So.
Martha, you're from County Auditor. Just to clarify, the gate that they're referring to is a gate at the end of McMullen. It's on the actual county highway. It is not the gate to the property that we're talking about.
Totally different. I, I will.
I wanna say, I'm sorry, before I forget. Related to discussing this particular road that's the county, I would like the, I would like to see. If we can work somehow to get cameras or something over there. Because I think that now with all the work that's going to be done with the Marx Tower, we need to be protective. Of what's going, of, of what's going, our, our investments there. And so if there's any way that we can work with the auditor's office to do some kind of cameras or some kind of security. I think that that's extremely important too. If they're willing.
And I'll remind the board, there is a, there is a resolution by a prior board, which I was a pro, a part of. That issued a moratorium on all the injection wells in Trumbull County. And just so everybody's clear. We have the unfortunate moniker here in Trumbull County of being one of the highest and right now maybe the highest in the state. Out of eighty-eight counties for most injection wells. It's a dumping ground now. This is, this is, this is a serious issue that's affecting our environment. We don't know the long-term ramifications of this.
Do wanna say though.
Noxious gases, seismic activity.
It's been.
Okay, so just to.
Our water, our, our well water. We don't know what, what can come of this.
So the seismic activity, ODNR did say that it was, that it was caused by the injection well. However, the news started reporting on it within four minutes without even knowing it. It was just like a, a guess, okay? And now when they do do these, they put monitors and to make sure that there is to, to evaluate the seismic activity. So that no one's blaming them for it. So I just want, I just wanna be clear that there are some changes and that's to me, that's neither here nor there.
You go tell those school boards.
But that's neither here nor there. What I'm saying is we need to be protecting our. We need to not be helping a private business. It doesn't matter what private business it is. It's not our job to facilitate someone's making money.
It's not only facilitating, there's been, there's been a, a, a pattern of trespassing. And if you use that road, the truck traffic will eat up that road. This is not rocket science.
They've not only trespassed, but they've, they've caused wear and tear on county's resources. And I think it's important to protect even that access, which is a road, so.
Not to mention the millions of dollars of infrastructure that we're investing in that property. So that's.
I agree. I mean, not on everything. With moving forward on.
We are investing millions and millions of dollars on a property that's next to an injection well. Who did the research on that?
The state?
Yeah.
Who voted on the, as a board to let, to allow a tower to be built next to an injection well? And then says now we're worried about what could happen to our tower because we decided to build next to an injection well.
So are you saying that it's, that it's gonna be causing seismic activity?
What it's gonna be causing, but if that's the argument you guys are making, then why are we allowing a tower to be built there? Why did we choose that site? Why did the board before me vote?
It was the location and the.
Facilitate the coverage for our constituents and those areas.
The first responders.
Yes, exactly. So that they can, if they call in, they can actually be served.
They can communicate to each other.
Right.
Martha, you're a Trumbull County auditor. The location itself is the highest place and that's why. I spoke with Mr. Miller from DAS last night. I was informed that they did not know there was a well there. They didn't know until fairly recently. There was, they, that you couldn't see it because there was brush. It was, it was covered. There was no, they didn't know it. The picto, pictometry that you're looking at is from probably twenty seventeen, so it's not very recent. So that's why you can't see that something is there, but you don't know what it is.
If you just go to, if you just go to Google Maps anywhere, you can clearly see, here's our well site. Here's a well next to it in a big open field.
He's from, are these, who are these from?
These are from right off the internet.
Yeah, but you don't know.
Printing them off the internet last night.
So. So at any rate.
Look, with the look of the site, here's our tower, here's the, here's that, here's the well site. Nobody could see that? Nobody did due diligence, you need it, we're right next to it.
Yeah, but I'm saying his, I don't know if those are from the guy that's working there.
They're not. I printed them off the internet from an app.
Spoke with Mr. Miller. His stance was, first of all, they look at the property itself. They look to see the suitability for the tower, the ability for it to work.
Right.
Those things, the, the signal, that stuff is what they look at. They, um, and he, he did not know and there was an injection well until fairly recently.
Are they saying, oh, so now my, would they have, would they change?
I don't know if they would have changed that or not. I, I can't answer that question. That's a question for Mr. Miller. Not for me, but I did ask that question because I was asked to ask that question.
And, and I asked the same thing too. If you just look at the map that was brought us yesterday, this one, here's our property. Here's all, here's this guy's business on both sides of the property. Here's the map of what it is. Here's what we are asking him to do, to build his own road and go all the way around our road to get to that site.
Respectfully, respectfully.
Here's what he's doing now.
Call the question.
And here's what he's asking to do to get the easement to go right here.
Respectfully, it's not about the injection well, it's about the trespass.
That's what I mean, that's not our argument. That's a state's issue. We shouldn't even be discussing anything about.
So call the questions.
Okay, so for the motion that Ms. Frenchco read.
And I did a motion to table it till next week.
Mine was first though, so.
So Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
For Cantal Mesa.
Bill, Bill, I have a question before I vote on this. Is there a possibility that the, that an easement exists that we don't know about? I mean, your office would know that.
I, I will say this, I don't know of one myself. I, I don't know of one.
You were involved in it.
Or resolution from Mr. Hesel.
I'm not aware, I don't recall one. I can't say definitively that there is none. I will say that from what I see recorded and what we've kinda found recorded in the recorder's office of this, I'm not aware of one. But is there a possibility, something?
There's always a.
I can't, I can't say no.
I, I believe that they probably just wanna be there a little bit longer to get the rest of the stuff. Then tie up their loose ends from trespassing. That's my opinion.
At the end of the day, if they do have an easement, they have an easement. Let me, let me make something clear. We're not, we don't have the authority to stop this, but we don't have to facilitate it. That's what my, that's my.
No, we have the authority to stop.
He has other business, Commissioner. He has other businesses down this road. If you look at the map, those are all his businesses down there. On both sides of the road. So we're telling this guy, now you can't access to get to any of your buildings. You can't get this access to feed your deer or do anything yet.
But, but again, this is a private business, a very lucrative business. That, that can put in a road if need be.
Right.
And they're looking for us to just.
We, to use, to use and deteriorate our road. I just, I disagree with. Can I ask you something real quick? So say they do end up coming up with this elusive easement or whatever that they say that they have. And you already sent out a stop letter and they produced that, we would just be able to rescind our letter, correct? Without any type of.
Guess so.
Right.
Uh, but I also, I just wanna point out too that, that this wouldn't prevent anybody from using McMullen Road, which is I believe a township road. This would only be our actual access drive.
Right, that is not a dedicated road.
It is our road.
And they're gonna tear it up with truck traffic.
I also, I mean, I've seen the maps too. I understand what their, what their desire for access is. But I, I do, I just wanted to be clear for, I guess anybody listening who hasn't seen the maps in as much detail. This, this wouldn't be including McMullen Road, the actual dedicated road.
Correct. It's, it's a county road.
I believe it's a township.
It's a county road and it ends where it curves into the property.
I got that map from you. I, I don't know who left me the map yesterday, but thank you. Yeah.
At the end of the day, I, I think that we need to send the cease and desist letter.
I agree.
Immediately.
So your vote?
My vote is yes.
Mr. Malloy?
No. Okay, does anybody else have anything for the good of Trumbull County? Or Mr. Settles?
My name is Dan Settles, trustee in Brookfield and with your permission, I know what you're saying that what you voted on. Has nothing to do with the injection well, but I was wondering if I could share our concerns once again with the injection well, if that would be appropriate.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, I listened yesterday after your workshop to the meeting and, and. Like I said, I told you before, I, I respect your opinion on injection.
Thank me for my vote.
All right, I'm thanking you. You usually vote against me.
And, and the process that you all have done on hashing out, whether you can do it or not. And that was part of the reason I came to you early on and provided the maps of all these properties and our concerns. Because I had a feeling something like this could happen. And I think if you weren't putting up a tower right now, it would have happened and you wouldn't have known about it. It's because it would be very difficult. It's not monitored. We have some of the same concern as township trustees as you do. The water tower, the Marx Tower. Or we have some additional ones and people have contacted me, some people in that area still have wells, water wells where they're getting their drinking. So that we're concerned about what's gonna possibly happen with an injection well to those, their, their drinking source, their, their water. The other is that property in the back end is about a thousand yards. There's a property in between that the Callahan's own. And I provided that with you when I, for you when I provided those, is where our school district is. And if you know any history of our school district, first of all, it was built on a shale surface, shale underneath it. Which I don't know whether that was a good idea or not, but the part of the school shifted in the process where. One of the floors was, was much higher than the other and they had to do a remediation well. That was some state funding that went into effect by the school. So the state, along with the township or the school board. They had a lawsuit and it was finally remediated last year during summer. In fact, school started late last year. So they could do that fix, several hundred thousands of dollars. So. Once again, that's a shale surface. So part of our concerns, what's gonna happen when this nine thousand or eight thousand PSI unknown. Toxic liquid is being injected, is it going to affect that? Where our schools are, one of our most vulnerable parts of our population, spend a good part of their day, you know, nine months a year. Uh, those children, we're, we're concerned about that too. And I wanna be careful because I could be quite honest with, know Mr. Ray if I saw him. I know Mr. Ray's a businessman in Brookfield. He owns a business. Other than that, he owns the subway in Brookfield. He's a business owner. Um, and, and he, you know, as you indicated, has been a good neighbor. I understand about the piece of property that was stolen from there and he's helped with that. But the bottom line is we have several good neighbors that are in that area that are living there every night. Mr. Ray doesn't live in Brookfield Township. He moves, comes back to Warren at the end of the day. God bless him, we, we getting tax dollars from him, but he's not sleeping there overnight. When this material might be underneath our residence. He doesn't have to deal with that. He can come back to Warren and, and, and have a nice place to live. Our residents would have to deal with that every night. And part of the injection process, and I know, I don't wanna go into detail, but the fracking that goes on, this isn't a fracking operation. Of course, you know, this is a byproduct of the fracking operation being that this liquid. My concerns were several is, is that when I was a fireman, I was a hazardous material technician. So I dabbled a little bit in transportation of liquids and gases. We had to do that as part of our, our schooling. But. The material that comes as a byproduct of fracking, this, they call it brine. Is unspecified of what it contains. So most, if you, if you have to transport over the highways, the rails or in air, you need a placarding system that the United States Department of Transportation. A four-digit that goes on, you can see it for propane, gasoline. They can't, they can't assign one to these byproducts. Cause they don't know what it, it consists of. It's not just saltwater. There's been accidents with these trucks going from site to site. And EPA tried to identify the liquid as it spilled and it had, uh, there's a list of what it has. One of them I know, I remember from my memory is benzene, which is a known carcinogenic. Parts of benzene is in that process of when they inject it underground and they bring it back through. So this is the material that we don't even know what's in it. That's gonna be injected in high pressure under our community with the shale, with the schools and what have you. But, um. That our residents have to live on top of. And that's concerning. We did the process of, um, the last injection, we had an injection well. It's, it's been in the last six years since I've been trustee, Route seven north of Warren Sharon Road. It's near a trailer park and a company come in, drilled two injection wells and the process, uh, the first one collapsed before they put anything in it. They've since abandoned that site, but we've been through the process as, as, uh, Mr. Cantal Mesa said. As a resident, I wrote letters prior to being trustee to ODNR. Uh, about the proximity of our fire station at the time, that it could be blocked by traffic from the trucks or whatever. And it, it really fell on deaf ears and. You have a good point is that it isn't, you don't have any way to regulate it as commissioners, an injection well, nor do we. But ODNR does. And ODNR, like it or not, is, is receives some of their funding from the oil and gas industry. So they're the ones that's regulating something that indeed they're profiting from. Uh, that's part of their funding and I, I find that to be ironic. So what, your point that you brought up, I think we're, we're the governments at the lower levels of the chain. You have the federal, the state, and then it comes to you guys and us. And whether it's right, wrong, or indifferent to say, we don't wanna discriminate or, or single out somebody. They're, they're going, I, I can almost guarantee you, they probably, I don't know how many they've denied, they're going to approve this to be done. So by us, meaning you and us, making it harder for this individual. Might, you said yesterday, it's probably gonna get done anyway. But this is the only avenue we have as local elected officials to try to put a speed bump in the way of this process. I don't have any ill thoughts towards Mr. Ray. He's, he's a taxpayer in my, in my, in my community, provides some of our tax base. But prior to this, Mr. Ray had approached one of my fellow trustees seeking to get help. Through the EPA super fund to clean up this site where there was a injection well. Since he couldn't clean it up, now he's gonna wanna contribute to the contamination of the property. And I just find that disheartening. And the fact that the comment was made that there was an injection well and then you all decided to put a, a tower up. That injection well wasn't active. That was an abandoned injection well at the time that that, you approved that. He's just been in this, it hasn't, it hasn't been approved yet by ODNR.
It's not been permitted. It's not been permitted yet. I'm sorry to cut you.
I'm sorry, I wanna say it's already been tested and they, and they, and the owner of the property knows that it's going to be profitable to do that. And so I'm under the impression that they're going to move forward with it regardless.
Very well might be and, and you have.
They're out, they have some out of the state too.
They do. And that, that's the other thing that was brought up. It's a shame where they can take this liquid they probably got in Pennsylvania. Cause we're, you know, our state line is, and bring it over here and dump it here. The only reason they're doing that is because Pennsylvania won't let them.
Right.
That's right.
We're letting them do that. Once again, you don't have any, any way to stop them, but I think this is our way of saying, we're here to protect the people in our community. And we're gonna do what we can do to do that. Will it make it difficult for him? That's why I provided those maps to you to go all the way around a U-turn and come in there. Yeah, it will. If, and if he really wants to do it, he's gonna do it anyway. You're right. But we need to take a stand as local elected officials that we wanna protect our citizens. That's, that's why I serve. I serve to make sure my citizens are safer, whether it be police, fire, or the roads being plowed. And in this instance, to have somebody that it's been proven a dangerous operation, come in here and inject this stuff. Under our people and then leave and go home. But that company's not in Ohio, might, might be down in center of Ohio. I don't know where they're located, but. And the property owner doesn't even live in Brookfield and he's gonna go home at night. It isn't gonna affect him if something goes awry with that process. But so that's my concern with my citizens and why I wanted to, I appreciate everything and I know. Bottom line, this has nothing to do what you're talking about. It does, but it doesn't, but I was concerned that that was gonna happen. Without anyone knowing. And the next thing you know, there's something up and you go, oh, we didn't realize it was there. So I'm glad you're, you're looking at it and I appreciate it.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
And I, I agree with your points, you have fantastic points in there. And I think all three of us agree with you. Almost a hundred percent on exactly what you're saying with the waste coming from out of the state. My concern, and I'll address it again just publicly, is we are government. Is this use of our power or abuse of our power? Should we as government be crushing people that we don't like what they do? Should we be using our power to restrict our citizens that are conducting business lawfully and legally according to what the laws are today? Like I said, we didn't make the laws. Like I said, we didn't make the laws.
The laws today say no trespassing, Denny. That's what you're missing.
Okay, and the laws today also say that we are allowed to conduct business and he is, he is getting a permit potentially for this.
Pretending like you're crushing someone for not letting them break the law and trespass on Trumbull County.
Okay, how many other people trespass on our property every day? That park at the Ag Center, that use the bike trail and drive from one side of the bike trail to the other with their lawn mowers? Because they have property on both sides. So are we arresting any of them? Are we sending them cease and desist orders? Because we're driving the tractors across our bike trail? What happens every day, all day long.
Would I like to move on to discuss?
This guy's in a business you don't like. So you want to, no different than.
It's time for us to move on.
Deal with your political enemies.
It's time for us to move on.
A guy who's a citizen.
It's time. On, it's time for us to move on. Um, I'd like to discuss the, the potential of monitoring the property and how quickly we can facilitate that. I, I, I wonder if at least Commissioner Cantal Mesa would agree on that. And maybe we can talk today about getting, um, maybe I, ITU in the auditor's office or, um, maybe Bill Hart or someone like, how can we make sure that we get, if you would do that, I think it would be a good idea because.
What do, what do we want to monitor to make sure someone doesn't do what? Trespass?
To have.
You want to, you want to spend money to watch Joe Ray to see if he comes back on the property?
So again, let's, let's move on with this. We're about to invest, what, a million dollars into this property?
One point five.
Yeah, one point five million. So what I would like to do is make sure that whoever is doing the work and whatever our investment is there is protected. So that is the reason hasn't, it's, it's that I want to see what we can do to monitor that.
And then, then we might as well monitor the bike trail to see if farmers are driving across the bike trail.
That's not the same. That's not the same. Can you please address? Thank you.
Let me ask, because I can answer real quick. Tim, Tim Hanford, Director of Energy Technology with Trumbull County. As soon as we get power out there, we can do it. As soon as, because right, right now, the tower doesn't have power. So that's, that's going to be our big thing. We're working with Ohio Edison, we're with contractors out there to get power run to that location. So.
Well, nevertheless, the, 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 the letter can be sent from our prosecutor's office. You have a, you have a majority of the board saying to send it.
And how quickly can that go out? And then we could still, um, police, police it, you know, at some level.
Just depends when power's run out there. That's it.
Power out there, just not for the tower.
Not for the tower, no. So where, where we would want to put the cameras at, there, there's, there's no access. Yeah.
Is it the ax? I'm sorry, what?
Yes.
I hear auditor and I hear both of you and I just want to.
I apologize. Martha, you're a Trumbull County auditor. There is power out there, as Gary said, for the water tower. There's also power further south in the property for the radio tower, but there's not power right at the Marx Tower yet. They're still working on that. They were supposed to be meeting earlier this week, but that didn't happen because they're still working on the stuff out west with Ohio Edison. They're still dealing with the outages.
Okay.
So, um, that is, that's a time factor. We can start looking at least at what we can do. Before we add power and, and.
And also what the board needs to consider with, with this is it will cost money.
And that's a huge investment. I think we need, we need to spend something to make sure our investment is protected.
Start with the letter and see what happens.
And, and we're willing to research, um, what, what, what is available and what we can do. We're certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I, that's needed and I appreciate the work of the auditor's office bringing, um, or the auditor herself bringing that to our attention. I, and I'm going to pull this up and write, writing, or maybe I'll just do it verbally because verbal records requests are just as valid and hopefully the clerk will take notice as I'm doing a, a public records request, um, from Commissioner Malloy, be, between Commissioner Malloy and employees of Select Water and/or the owner of the property over the last, um, two weeks.
Is there anyone else?
I just make sure that the.
Sorry.
I'll follow up on it.
Anybody else have anything for the good of Trumbull County?
Oh yeah, yesterday there is discussion about the, um, about the, um, the chicken farm. Mr. Allen, can we talk about that a little bit? Cause I want to make sure that, um, the board is clear on, um, how to move forward about that. Maybe Gary, Director?
We have some, a citizen waiting here. Can we, can we table that until she goes?
I'll be very quick. My name is Fiona Rominsky. I'm just coming today to introduce myself to you. I'm your new regional liaison with the Secretary of State for your county. We do a lot of things with businesses, so we just are making the rounds of our commissioners, letting them know that we have a lot to do with businesses in terms of helping new entrepreneurs and existing entrepreneurs in terms of mentoring, uh, finding financing and stuff like that. So I just wanted to say hello and introduce myself and I thank you for your time today.
Thank you so much.
You replace Shemore?
Yes.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Ask Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer.
Okay. So I just wanted to ask about that. And I think, um, should it be Bob or you who's most apprised of this matter?
I, I would think it was me. Yes, I've explained this before. There was a billing error that resulted in, uh, a much lower water bill for, uh, Allenway Farms out in Southington. And it had, it had something to do with the data transfer from the meter itself into our software. And we know what the readings were. So I mean, there's no ambiguity as to how much water he actually used. We know how much it is now. It's just that it didn't translate through the billing software to give him a proper bill. And so he was only charged, I won't say thirty-five to forty percent of the bill that he was supposed to, uh, pay. And it ended up with a deficit to the district of somewhere in the neighborhood of sixteen to eighteen thousand dollars. We notified him of that as soon as we became aware of it. And, uh, anyway, and now we are trying to collect that and it's been sent down to the prosecutor's office to get his opinion about our stance on having him pay that bill.
We've had that, if I'm not mistaken, we had a similar, while I was here, situation[1632.06]